Good afternoon. This is a hearing before the Boston Cannabis Board. Today is Wednesday, July 8th, 2020. I would ask anyone unless they've been called to testify to please mute themselves. I'm now going to introduce the Chairwoman of the Boston Cannabis Board, Kathleen Joyce.
Okay, wait a minute. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today. I'd like to introduce Commissioner John Smith, Commissioner Lisa Holmes, and Commissioner Darlene Lombos. We're here today to talk about the Boston Cannabis Board's role in the legalization of marijuana. As you know, in 2016, Massachusetts residents voted to legalize the recreational use of marijuana. Every single neighborhood across the city, with the exception of one, voted in favor of legalization. Today's hearing is not about whether or not marijuana should be legal. This is about ensuring that the needs of the applicants and the neighborhoods are taken into consideration as these businesses open up throughout the city. Our role in this process is to approve marijuana applicants and to ensure the process is fair and transparent. Leslie?
I am now going to turn to administrative matters. This hearing is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's executive order temporarily amending the open meeting law due to COVID-19. This is what allows for us to meet virtually. This hearing is being recorded and will be posted online. Please note, this is a hearing to take public comments on the draft rules and regulations that have been promulgated by the board. Testimony will be limited to those draft rules and regulations. Testimony on the industry in general, specific operations, or previous pending or future applications will not be accepted by the board. Individuals will be called in the order in which they reached out to the board asking to testify. If you have not previously reached out to testify, please utilize the chat function to provide your name, address, and affiliation. Please direct any questions to cannabisboard@boston.gov, which I will put in the chat shortly, as no questions or comments in the chat function or direct messages will be answered. You will be asked to limit the length of your testimony to three to five minutes and to submit a written copy of your remarks to ensure that all parties have the ability to testify today. Again, when you are called to testify, you will be asked to state your name, your address, and what company or organization, if any, you are affiliated with, as well as what specific portion or portions of the draft rules and regulations you are addressing so that the commissioners can properly direct their attention. The commissioners will not be voting on these draft rules and regulations today, but will take all of this testimony and all comments received under advisement. Written comments will be accepted through the end of the public comment period on July 15th at 11:59 PM. It is important to note that the board does not give more weight to one kind of testimony over another. For example, written testimony is given same amount of weight as an individual who is here today to testify virtually. Chairwoman Joyce will now speak to several issues that we have seen come up in the comments received to date.
Thanks, Leslie. I wanted to jump into the rules and regulations and point out two sections that we've received very thoughtful comments on and to address them at the outset. The first is the several categories. The first is evaluating the application according to the ordinance and giving 25% of the potential 100% score to the diversity and inclusion plan. These draft rules in no way eliminate that requirement. However, when setting the 50% minimum score for the other criteria, we have been advised against imposing a minimum diversity requirement on applicants. But we will continue to use an applicant's diversity and inclusion plan as an important factor in scoring the application. Again, I want to reiterate, we're committed to ensuring equity and adhering to the intent of the ordinance. The other section that produced several comments is the buffer zone. So there are two buffer zones in the rules and regulations. One is the half-mile buffer zone, and the other one is the 500-foot school zone buffer zone. These are really two distinct creatures of zoning. The school buffer zone is state law and subsequently built into our zoning code. And it has to be treated differently than the half-mile buffer zone. First, the proposed process for applying for license where there is an already existing cannabis establishment within a half-mile. This half-mile buffer zone between establishments was created by municipal ordinance. The draft rules and regulations aim to create a transparent, predictable process for obtaining the necessary buffer zone relief in the appropriate circumstances so that more than one establishment within a half-mile radius of another establishment could open and operate. The draft rules address the variance process for buffer zone conflicts in this situation and will take additional comments under advisement. I'm open to reconsidering the process, the heightened scrutiny requirements that have been written into the draft rules and regulations for variance, including the proposed requirements of letters of support from the direct abutters. A lot of these rules and regulations were modeled after the rules and regulations for liquor licensing, so that was our starting point. Again, these are drafts, and we're intending to solicit feedback and continue the dialogue on these issues. The half-mile buffer zone between establishments is different from the school buffer zone, which prohibits a license from being issued within 500 feet from an established school that provides education for grades K through 12. We've received a lot of comments on this section as well. This is a very distinct and separate issue. The school buffer zone was created by state legislation and is written into the Massachusetts General Laws. Massachusetts General Law 94G provides the regulation of recreational cannabis, and then Section 5B3 specifically addresses the sighting of an establishment within a school zone. We, as a board, do not have the ability to change the school zone. This section specifically lays out the requirements for proposed cannabis establishment within that zone, and any changes to that would have to be done. They cannot be done piecemeal, but applicant by applicant would have to be done by ordinance or by law.
And to follow up on what the Chairwoman said, any change to the school buffer zone, again, would have to be done by ordinance. It is not in any way within the purview of this board or these rules and regulations. Additionally, it is important to note, the change to the school buffer zone under state law would have to be citywide. It could not be applied, as the Chairwoman said, on a case-by-case basis. And those statements were simply to ensure that all parties who wish to testify understand what specifically we are considering today and what this board has no control over.
Go ahead, Leslie. I was gonna say, before we moved on to the public comment, I just wanted to see if any of the other commissioners had any comments about the buffer zone or the scoring of the diversity. Okay.
And before we begin with the list of individuals who has requested to testify, is there anyone here who is an elected official or a representative of an elected official who wishes to speak? No one is jumping out at me, but we don't want to overlook anyone. Okay. With that, we will turn to the individuals who have requested to testify in order. Again, your testimony will be limited to these rules and regulations. When I call your name, please provide your address, if any affiliation with a company, and what specific portions of the rules and regulations you wish to address. Limit the length of your testimony to three to five minutes at most, and please submit written testimony. Please note that as the record is being kept open during the public comment period, all commissioners will receive and will review any written comments you provide. So if you do not feel that you have enough time to address all of the things you want to note regarding these rules and regulations, please feel free to submit additional written testimony. That, calling Ross Bradshaw of New Deal.
Hello, Ross Bradshaw of New Deal, located at 118 Cambridge Street in Worcester. We also have application pending before the City of Boston at 48 Brookhaven Ave in Fenway. So I'll be speaking just solely towards the zoning buffer conflicts between existing establishments or one existing establishment and an applicant. So a little bit brief background on myself and kind of the application process. I think it's important just in terms of context. When it comes to equity, it comes to economic empowerment applicants like myself and other folks that are seeking community host agreements in the City of Boston. Zoning is probably the biggest barrier for a lot of the folks. There are a number of barriers, like finance and going through the state process. But one of the barriers that was unknown to a lot of applicants that have been in the process for a significant amount of time now is zoning. A number of applicants applied, some nearly a year ago. And at that point in time, there were no buffer conflicts with certain establishments because the HCAs weren't granted. Perfect example, in my case, when we submitted our application, there wasn't another applicant in Fenway. And now, as an equity applicant, we have yet another barrier that is in our way. And so my recommendation that I would have for the board is for the folks that have applied or that are social equity or equity applicants, I think at the very least, they should, if they are in a buffer zone conflict now, they should have the opportunity to be able to present before the board without having to have additional letters or additional butter comments. I think for a lot of the folks that have really been patient and worked through this process, at the very least, they should have their day to have their voices heard. I think it would be a tough pill for a lot of folks that have sacrificed everything along this process not to, at the very least, be able to have their communities speak on their behalf or to have their application considered before the board. So my only recommendation is, if we're talking about genuine equity, if we're talking about creating genuine opportunity, specifically in those high-market areas. If you think of the North End, Fenway, Back Bay, essentially right now, there's a monopoly on those particular areas. And to my belief, my understanding, there's not one economic empowerment applicant or not one majority-minority-owned business in those areas. So essentially, these businesses are forced to the outskirts of Boston, which I don't think was the intention of the ordinance. So I thank you guys for taking these comments. I thank you guys for having this meeting, and I hope and wish that you consider some of the buffer amendments as we continue on this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. And I apologize, I just missed a message from Melissa in Counselor Flynn's office.
Sorry, what was the message?
Hi, everyone. This is Melissa from Counselor Flynn's office. Just wanted to say that I'm here representing the counselor. Thank you so much for being here and hosting this very important hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Calling Roz McCarthy, Minorities for Medical Marijuana. Again, please limit your testimony to the draft rules and regulations. Please state your address. If I have not already mentioned your affiliation, and please limit your testimony to three to five minutes.
Hi, I'm gonna take myself off of video so you don't have any skipping so you can hear me well. Okay. So hi, my name is Roz McCarthy. I'm the founder and the CEO of Minorities for Medical Marijuana. Our corporate address is 927 South Golden Avenue, Orlando, Florida. We have a Massachusetts chapter that's ran by Derrell Black in Dorchester, Massachusetts. I bring you greetings, and I thank you for your time this morning, or this afternoon, rather. M for MM, as we're known, is a national 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that services the community, African-American, Hispanic community, communities of color regarding education outreach, information advocacy as it pertains to the legalization of the plant. Mostly important, we focus on the business side as well as social justice issues that are related to legalization. Our goals and priorities for equity applicants, and I will tell you, there's two areas that I really want to focus on. Focus on, number one, the buffer area, the buffer zone, as well as the diversity and inclusion plan. So first and foremost, our goals and priorities. Number one, we want to protect equity applicants against fraud, protect equity from misrepresentation, protect equity applicants from licensing access barriers and issues, support equity applicants with easy-to-follow workflow highlighting the application process, protect equity applicants from intentional or unintentional redlining business threat, and then, of course, protect the intent in addition of diversity and inclusion plan requirement in the application process with the recommendation the board addressed plans on how to enforce plans submitted once licensed. So that's our first situation where we want to make sure, we want to go on record, that we applaud the board for adding the diversity and inclusion requirement to planning. However, we've seen across the country in many different states and cities that the actual enforcement of the plan, once folks are awarded a license, has really gone by the wayside. And basically, people are putting anything on paper to get a license and not adhering to whatever their plan is. And so we do want to make record of that and encourage the board to have some type of enforcement policy when it comes to that DNI plan that is really critical to their application. Currently, the situation is there's 14 host community agreements on record. Three of the 14 are economic empowered or equity business applicants. The current rules will compound and perpetuate the current barriers with the buffer zone. The current non-equity applicants are mostly white-owned, national, and affluent businesses who essentially are monopolizing the business opportunities for equity applicants who also want to realize revenue from the volume-driven opportunities presented when establishing a business in Boston City Center. The proposed drafting, the proposed draft zoning rules are within direct conflict with the City of Boston and BCB's intent and goal in creating equity in the cannabis industry. Furthermore, without implementing these changes, the BCB will continue to perpetuate the status quo in which equity applicants are relegated only to minority neighborhoods where buffer zone conflicts may not currently exist. So we have four recommendations, or actually, we have two recommendations in supporting those recommendations. Recommendation number one, buffer zone equity applicants get a automatic hearing with the BCB in the case of buffer zone issues. Recommendation number two, social equity applicants in a non-social equity applicant buffer will receive a license and automatic recommendation to the ZBA that the variance will be granted. Therefore, we recommend letters of support from the City District Office and/or from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would be optional for equity applicants. Therefore, we also recommend, in the case of buffer zone conflicts, the requirement for equity applicants to receive letter of support from each direct abutter or a proposed location as recorded with the city should be removed. Therefore, equity applicant statement would be used as the basis for automatically recommending the ZBA grant the variance. And so hopefully, those recommendations will be considered. We have a written testimony that you can follow. And of course, we've provided our website. And if you have any other questions, we would love to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions?
Do, thanks, Roz. Thanks for your testimony today. I think we do realize that the requirement about the abutters letters may have to be looked at more closely with some flexibility built in. My question for you is, as far as the enforcement policy for diversity and inclusion, do you have any examples in other parts of the country of this type of enforcement policy that is working?
No, I'm working on it. And thank you, Chairwoman, for asking that question. It is an issue. And to be honest with you, we drafted language in the state of Florida that had that same requirement. However, we did not, we were not prepared for the number of information that was submitted that was not adhered to. So we are still here in Florida trying to figure out exactly what can be that enforcement piece. We made a recommendation during session this year, and unfortunately, it didn't get a hearing. But we made a recommendation that our Office of Supplier and Diversity within the state of Florida would be the enforcement arm to make sure that those diversity plans are adhered to. I think we can maybe brainstorm some ideas, and I would love to maybe have this additional conversation to figure that out.
Yeah, I'd like to see what's going on in other parts of the country too and best practices. If you want to share that with us, we'll be open to conversation.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's a challenge throughout the country. We have not seen best practices, or we have not seen a state or city who is getting it right. So I would love to figure out how to get it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions? Commissioner Lombos? Commissioner Holmes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your testimony. Calling Sean Bertie and Armani White with EVG Farms. Again, please limit your testimony to the draft rules and regulations. Please state your addresses. And please limit your testimony to three to five minutes. I believe you're muted, Sean.
Yes, I was. Thank you. My name is Sean Bertie, 31 Aldrich Street, Roselandale, Mass. I am a partner in EVG or Evergreen Farms. We are an applicant for a retail marijuana store in the Hyde Park neighborhood of Boston. I'm here with my partner, business partner, Armani White of Roxbury. We have submitted, well, first, thank you to the board for taking the time to listen to our comments. We have submitted, as of yesterday, written comments that you can follow along, but we would like to highlight on a high level some of the flags that we've seen raised in the draft regulations. First is the additional requirements on the buffer zone conflicts. This section unfairly places certain requirements on some applicants, but not others when creating an application that can qualify as complete. Specifically, this section requires that, excuse me, that any applicant that has a known competitor within a buffer zone get letters of approval from direct abutters, which has never been part of the city's plan for community support previously. If a company like Evergreen with equity status in the city cannot get such letters for any reason, they would be barred from opportunity even to come before the Boston Cannabis Board, essentially blocking us from participating in the industry altogether. Evergreen has worked tirelessly for three years during their pending application to garner community support for the establishment, hosted community meetings, and presented to the community groups and neighborhood associations. If these letters were known to be required previously, our strategy for community support would have been different from the beginning. Other industries that we're aware of in Boston don't require such letters, placing an additional hardship on cannabis businesses and those with known competitors. Evergreen Farms fears that requiring these letters will naturally lead to improper incentives or financial payoffs to abutters to sign for one business over another, which is easily done by large corporations, but not so much by small local businesses and economic empowerment and social equity applicants. We feel that this section needs to be removed completely from the regulations, and zoning buffer issues should be left to the city when reviewing host community agreements and/or the zoning board. The second portion that we'd like to raise is the evaluation of new applicants, the diversity section. The ordinance passed by the Boston City Council included specific criteria on which applicants can be evaluated for licenses. One of those is a diversity and inclusion plan, which is weighted at the highest of all others, at 25%. Diversity and inclusion plans are often different than hiring plans, which is already part of a separate criteria under the employment plan for the Boston Cannabis Board's consideration. A diversity and inclusion plan does not necessarily equate to how diverse company ownership is, but on how the company plans to achieve a diverse and inclusive business plan and work environment. Plans like these are part of what the state reviews in licensing applications. Many corporations across Massachusetts and the country are establishing these types of plans outside of the cannabis space and are becoming common elements in operating plans in general for businesses. Evergreen has worked very hard to create a diverse operation that is reflective of the community and that honors the goals of the community and of the Boston Cannabis Board and the City of Boston when seeking to achieve equity. This includes plans like working with minority-owned businesses for construction of the establishment space and partnering and contracting with other diverse vendors and cannabis products and other non-cannabis-related products and services. This should be part of what a company is evaluated on by the Boston Cannabis Board, as intended by the Boston Cannabis Board, and should be part of the scoring of applicants, like the other four criteria in the ordinance. I'd like to thank all of you for the time you've offered me to speak on this, and I'll like to kick it over to my partner for finishing remarks.
Yeah. Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, great. Yeah, I'm thinking of having me, Armani White, part of the Evergreen Farms team at 83 Hyde Park Ave. I just want to speak a little bit more to the new requirement for the buffer zones. As like a black man, as a person who's trying to open up a shop in a neighborhood that is changing demographically, it's really hard, it's really hard to get a letter of support, frankly, from a neighbor who might be racist and doesn't want to see a black person or a person of color-oriented company succeed. And so adding this new letter that we have to get, you know, it sets me up to be asking a not-elected official, not social justice-minded person for a letter of support to open my business, which it doesn't feel like the intent of what was set up. Sean and I were advocates before we met as entrepreneurs. I'm working to ensure that there was an economic empowerment system, and we took advantage of it once it was created. And this feels like another hurdle that doesn't need to be there. And it's good to hear Chairwoman Kathleen talk about that potentially, you know, folks already looking at that. But yeah, I think it's kind of a racial justice, it is a racial justice issue having this in there for people of color to have to ask white neighbors. And also adding on top of that, like, who knows? If, you know, if it's a big corporate landlord that owns multiple buildings, they could, you know, just play me and our competitor within the buffer zone against each other. And, you know, us as the little guys don't have the money to spend, to outspend the big guys. And so it's just like another racial justice economic issue. So yeah, you know, I'm here providing comments as an advocate for the industry and as someone who's directly been impacted by the war on drugs and someone who is trying to open up like a legitimate business, who is seeing like one of the final steps to get there being asking someone who was never a part of the conversation, frankly, to have to give me a letter of support. And so, yeah, I just want to make it very clear that that needs something, along with what Sean has shared already and what we've also submitted formally via email, which I won't, you know, take up too much time going through fully. But it felt really important to emphasize those two points. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have a question for either Sean or Armani?
I do have a comment for both Sean and Armani. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. And I want to repeat that we hear you that the abutter letters could be a barrier to entry for you, and that's why we're having this discussion today. It was never the intent of the rules and regulations to put up more roadblocks. It's actually to create a fair, more fair process and a transparent process for the applicants and the neighborhoods. So we hear you, and that's why we're here today to take these comments and continue the dialogue.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions? Commissioner Lombos?
I just, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I'm really excited to see black people owning their own businesses, and I'm really excited to be part of this commission that will help make sure that equity is at the center of what we're doing here. I also wanted to thank Roz McCarthy for her comments as well, and would love to get some more information, as Chairman Kathleen had mentioned, about more equitable policies. And we're really excited to be working with you on that so we can be one of the cities that can be the first to actually have something grounded in equity.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes, do you have questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you both for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Calling Dimitrios Pelikoudos, and I apologize for my pronunciation, with Assured Testing Laboratory. Again, please limit your testimony to the draft rules and regulations. State your address. Please limit your testimony to three to five minutes. And if you could, please state what specific portion of the rules and regulations you're addressing.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, distinguished members of the board, thank you for having us today. My name is Dimitri Pelikoudis, and I am the CEO of Assured Testing Laboratory. Our location of interest is 43 Freeport Street in Dorchester. And we wish to address the rules and regulations as a whole regarding testing labs. As some of you may be aware, there is a well-documented problem at present in the cannabis industry regarding testing. This is that there are only two labs currently licensed within the Commonwealth, which has created a vast backlog of supply. For comparison, at the size Massachusetts has now reached with cannabis, when Colorado was at a similar level, it supported nearly a dozen labs. As a scientist specializing in cannabis, as well as having worked in industry where I gained significant regulatory experience, I felt this was an appropriate place to utilize my talents in addressing this problem. We have an application in for this location in Dorchester, where we have met with Counselor Baker and relevant civic associations with enthusiastic support. We have consistently received comments, however, that the logistical and community impact of hosting a testing facility is vastly different from hosting, say, a dispensary grow or other marijuana establishment. Reading through the draft of this board's proposed rules and regulations, we are therefore asking that testing labs, as a whole, be treated as different entities that they are, such as, for example, aiding with an expedited process to approval to aid all types of applicants in this supply issue. We look forward to working with this body to address the testing problem and moving forward so that we may improve the safety of these products. and moving forward so that we may improve the safety of these products for all people within the Commonwealth. With that, I thank you, and I yield my time to any questions or concerns.
Thank you. I do want to make one point. In the buffer zone regarding the type of cannabis establishment, all cannabis establishments are considered ones that this board at this time does not have that discretion in terms of a zone. Just wanted to make that clear, but those are great comments. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't. Thank you for your testimony.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lombos?
Yeah, I did have a question about whether testing labs, Demetrius, or any of the other board members know if testing labs in other cities and states have been treated differently? Is that something that is common? I just wanted to understand what's happening here in Boston as opposed to other cities that have, cities and states that have licensed testing labs.
Yes, actually. So this has been something that has been a nationwide issue, wherever there has been an implementation of recreational marijuana, where oftentimes the rules and regulations that are drafted are geared towards the retail and then sort of forget about the labs, and then as a result have had to go back and retroactively change those. While I don't have the exact places where those rules have been changed, for example, in Massachusetts, I can speak to the fact that at the CCC level, the grows and dispensaries have asked for a temporary exemption from the current criterion standards for testing within the Commonwealth as this backlog has been such a burgeoning issue that has frankly driven several places into the ground because, you know, they're growing this product, and I believe that NEDA was quoted as having up to, you know, 1,000 pounds that they weren't able to receive, for example. The CCC has therefore, due to it wanting to hold on to its standard of excellence, refused to give any type of exception to the testing out there. And as such, there has been a great backlog remaining. So to answer your question very directly, yes, other states have treated labs separately, and we are asking that this be held in account due to the current problem that we in Massachusetts as a Commonwealth face as a whole. This is something that a lab such as ours would be able to come in and social equity, economic empowerment, or otherwise, we raise everybody up as a whole in being able to help this white market that we wish to help people with. And I hope that answers your question, Commissioner.
A little bit. Thank you. We'll get some more information on that, I'm sure, from Leslie. Yeah, Commissioner, we can certainly do some more research into that. Commissioner Holmes, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Calling Chauncey Spencer. Again, please limit your testimony to the draft rules and regulations. Please state your name, address, and your company affiliation, if any. Please limit your testimony to three to five minutes. State what specific portion of the draft rules and regulations you're providing comments regarding. And if you've not done so already, please submit written testimony as well.
Yes, my name is Chauncey Spencer of High Tech Farms. Address is 53 Roslin Street in Boston. And I'm referring to the required requirements for applicants and the letters of support. I'm finding and I'm hearing that some applicants are being compelled by city council people to enter into specifically lease agreements in order to receive letters of support from those same council members. This critical part of the process, you know, this is a critical part of the process. And the rules are that there are three requirements regards to site control. And that's what I'm specifically talking about, site control. And those are the letters from the landlord, deed, and a lease. If one applicant is required to have a lease and the other is required to have a deed, then, you know, that kind of creates a unequal disadvantage for the one, for the applicant that's forced to get a deed versus a lease because it increases the startup cost, right? And no applicant should be, should, in my opinion, no applicant should move forward for review until this critical part of the process is standardized across the board because it creates an opportunity for corruption and rigging of the entire system. So say, for instance, you know, one city councilman favors one over the other and then creates a condition on that applicant versus the other one. And it's just, it's a problem, right? And to the discussion, and I'm not exactly sure if this is in regards to any particular regulation, but it was part of one of the discussions that the board was having sometime in their last meeting in regards to monopolies. And this particular part is absent from the regulations. And it's currently the situation where we have the first applicant, you know, that has been waiting for years, competing with the first recreational, operational establishment for their second location, you know, and then maybe self-serving as it is, but I don't believe that these types of situations should be, you know, or these situations represent an equitable distribution of opportunities. You know, I feel, or if, you know, we know if you review the applications submitted to the city so far, some companies have submitted three applications in three different locations. If you look deeper than that, you'll see that the money connected to them are the same players who undermined safe ownership limits in the past and even have their attorneys working to craft equity ordinance itself to allow those hand-pick politically connected people to be front owners. You know, so I recommend that the first round of applicants or equity applicants, you know, be those who have not had a swing at or abided the apple and have operational, or have operational business in place. And so I will also agree with some of the other economic empowerment applicants that the requirement for letters for abutters is pretty, you know, it's difficult because some of the, some of us economic empowerment applicants have abutters who are competing with them directly, and they are owners of their establishments. So then, you know, how can I get a letter of support from my competitor? That just is just not possible. So with that said, I'll send my, give my time over to questions to the board.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions or comments?
Thanks for joining us today.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lombos? Commissioner Holmes? Thank you very much. Calling Michael Ross with Prince Lobel. As a reminder, please limit your testimony to these draft regulations. Please limit it to three to five minutes. And please note what specific portion of the regulations you are speaking regarding.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. I did send a letter to the board back in June. By my count, there were eight items on it that I wanted to go over. I'm not going to go over those today. I just thought it hit the top-line issues. A lot of the conversations have already been had. So let me just take the most relevant items that I could quickly. But please take a look at my letter. It was drafted in a way towards some smaller issues, too, that you might just want to catch. Anyway, I'm an attorney at Prince Lobel. I've been in the practice for six years in this industry. I've been practicing throughout Massachusetts. We're located in Boston, and I have several applicants that I represent. These comments are not directed towards any one of those, but rather just general comments. The first item is 1.02A, which references the word "complete application." I do think you might want to define what a complete application is. Specifically, since COVID, public hearings are no longer allowed in the city of Boston. So the board might want to consider not requiring something like a public hearing as a precursor to appear before it, given that some are waiting for that public hearing. There's also a question on whether or not you want to, obviously, the city council letter has to be included. It has to be considered by the board. It's scored. It's part of the ordinance. But if a city councillor was to withhold the letter or to offer a letter to another applicant ahead of that, it would change the order in which the board would hear. I think it's worth pointing out that in what a complete application, you might want to exempt the letter from the council, knowing that it still needs to be included, and just assume that it will get there by the time the hearing is scheduled, as well as with the public hearing point. That's the first item I want to reference. Item 1.04A, I'm sorry, item 1.04B refers to the criteria for an economic empowerment applicant or for an equity applicant. In the ordinance, the definition of the term "area of disproportionate impact" was referenced in two different, was defined differently in two different locations. I know that Attorney Chael White is going to be doing a lot of work in this space, but the regulations cannot narrow the scope of the ordinance, just as a matter of law. I think the point of the drafting was to allow for a slightly expanded version of what an area of disproportionate impact might mean in Boston. For example, someone who was to have grown up in a community that was gentrified but still lives there, is that person entitled to open in that community? You know, that was the conversation that was had at the council level, and that's why there was some flexibility written into that area of disproportionate impact. It might behoove the board to allow for a presentation by an applicant around that issue. Item number 105B. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure it has, it seems to be approved. Now, 105B refers to previously approved applicants. I just want to point out, it says that you need approval by the Zoning Board of Appeal and a host community agreement. I just want to point out that back in 2014, medical marijuana applicants did not need a host community agreement. They only needed a letter from the city council at the time, or by the mayor. At the time, they were giving letters by the city council and zoning approval. So to be consistent with, and I know that there were a few applicants that applied in that vein, I would remove the requirement for a host community agreement. It's obviously something that, I mean, these are, these are for the previously approved applicants. The buffer zone has been talked to, and I appreciate the chair's comments, so I'll skip that. And then the transferability issue is an important issue. It's 2.00. There's language in the transferability section that says there can be no transfer of stock within a company, essentially. And this is, I'd say this is an unfair burden, and I think it burdens the smaller participant and enhances the wealthier applicant. An applicant that has all the funds needed in order to build out a facility without seeking to go outside for additional investment typically going to be a larger, well-financed applicant. Most of the smaller applicants, including many economic empowerment applicants, social equity applicants, and others, are looking for investors all along the cycle, before, during, and after. I mean, certainly, if someone was to go in as an economic empowerment applicant and come out as a non-economic empowerment applicant, that should be a non-starter. But the board shouldn't restrict an applicant from getting investment from outside, especially in an industry that's not allowed to be banked by proper banking institutions. So if an applicant is able to come into the board, get approved, now they have to figure out, how do I get 1.5 million or whatever it's going to take to do my build-out? They absolutely are going to have to get outside investment, and they shouldn't be forbidden for doing that. There could be a process, I guess, similar to the liquor license process that the chair knows well, where you do have to come back in and kind of announce those items, but I don't think that should be unreasonably withheld. So I did put aside some language into that. I'll close on this last point. I know that there are a number, there's been a number of conversations about multiple applicants, applicants that are applying for multiple sites throughout the city. Yeah, and certainly, I think the intent to try to prevent some out-of-town operator from coming into Boston and swiping up three of the applications of whatever 50-plus that are available is well-intended. There are, however, some economic empowerment applicants that are trying to open multiple locations. And this is, I wouldn't think this is something that would be a bad thing. I mean, the whole point of the cannabis legislation was mirrored around the liquor legislation. And we certainly know within the liquor legislation that there are many chains within liquor stores throughout cities, throughout Massachusetts, where there's multiple operators from that space. So if a multiple, if an operator was to approach the board and they happen to be an economic empowerment or social equity applicant, I think the board should hear that and see an opportunity to do something that's wholly unique, that would be wholly unique to Boston, where there's just so limited, I think, multiple operators throughout the country. And I think it could be a good thing for an equity applicant. I'll end it there. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions?
Just a comment. Counselor, I, at the end, I agree with you, Boston needs to be treated differently. Establishments opening up in Boston, we are denser. We're bigger than a lot of these other communities that are seeing these places open up across the state. So that's why I think that we're going the extra mile to make sure there is equity across the city and our neighborhoods because it can't be a one-size-fits-all approach. We see that with all types of legislation. So I agree with your comments about Boston to be treated a little differently.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Lombos? Commissioner Holmes? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling Nancy Lowe, Coalition of Chinatown Organizations. As a reminder, please limit your testimony to these draft rules and regulations. Please state your name, address, and affiliation. If I have already not already read it into the record, please limit your testimony to three to five minutes. And please, if you've not done so already, submit written testimony for the record as well.
Okay, thank you. Like you mentioned, I represent a group of Chinatown organizations, including resident associations, nonprofits, principal of the Quincy Schools. We've been approached by a number of cannabis applicants that are interested in locating in our community. One in particular is very close to our schools and many daycare facilities and elderly housing. So we are concerned about the proximity because we are one of the densest neighborhoods in the city, and we also have high pollution rates being so close to the expressway and the Mass Turnpike. One of the things I want to comment regarding the school zone and that it should be applied to any facility that is using or leasing or owned by a school building. We do have Wang YMCA, which is less than 500 feet, that is being used by the Quincy Upper School. So that should be considered as part of the school zone as well. I also am supportive of community input. I think it's an important process and that I think the abutters, the standard for abutters should be applied the same as a ZBA, which is a one-mile radius. I think if someone wants to locate in someone's community, people in the neighborhood should have a say. Chinatown already gets spill-over activities from the nightclubs, from the Combat Zone, from other establishments that has caused, you know, drug problems and criminal activity. The principal of the Quincy School says that she commonly has to go upstairs to the roof where they have a playground, and also the Elliot Norton Park, which their students use and many other after-school programs. And they have to pick up, you know, drug paraphernalia and other items that children shouldn't be exposed to. So I think it is important, you know, the communities do have a say in what goes on. And I think that's, and also that, you know, the buffer zone between establishments, I think it's important that, you know, it's clear that if one establishment is licensed by the board, another one, even if it's in the application stage, should not be allowed to locate within half-mile radius. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I turn this to Chairwoman... Thank you. Before I turn this to Chairwoman Joyce, I do want to point out, as Chairwoman Joyce said earlier, that the buffer zone on the school piece is a creation of state legislation. And that specifically says that it applies to K through 12, an existing K through 12 school providing educational services. So I do want to flag that as something that, again, this, this board cannot amend. But that, Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lombos? Commissioner Holmes?
Can I just add that, so I, I'm, I am saying that it is used by, facilities that are used by K through 12 schoolchildren that are using facilities in the neighborhood for their educational classes, these facilities should be included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling, I believe it's Cleon Byron. I apologize, there may be a typo in the, in the chat. Cleon, and please correct me if I have your name correctly.
Exactly right. Thank you.
Your name, address, and affiliation, if any. Again, please limit your testimony as previously described.
Thank you. My name is Cleon Byron. The address is 1102A Blue Hill Avenue in Dorchester. And the name and the place of the company is Evok. Only two things I really just wanted to address was that, you know, we went through the community host meeting and we kind of got left in limbo because of the COVID. And like you said, we had to go out and get letters of support and things like that. And I'm just, you know, hoping that the board could look out for us because, you know, unfortunately, a pandemic happened while we were in the process and it kind of slowed us down. And also because of it, I think, of no fault or note of, of the board or the commission is that we kind of got left out of the loop. And, and like, we've been in this for two years and we just wanted to make sure that economic power, social equity applicants who have been in the process and have waited patiently, you know, hopefully they can pay special attentions to. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any questions?
Thank you for joining us.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lombos? Commissioner Holmes? And I believe unless there's anyone else present who would like to indicate in the chat function, they would like to testify, we've come to the end of the request for public testimony. Again, please note that the public comment period is open until July 15th at 11:59 PM. I have put the email address in the chat and I will do that again. If anyone would like to provide additional commentary or ask questions regarding the proposed rules and regulations, please feel free to submit those at any time. Again, anything in writing will be given equal weight to any testimony received today. The board greatly appreciates everyone taking the time to read through the rules and regulations and your thoughtful comments. With that, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairwoman Joyce, do you have any closing remarks?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Do any of the commissioners have anything else to add?
No, thank you, everyone, for coming to testify today. Really appreciate it.
And please note that this board will reconvene at a public hearing on July 22nd. That information has been posted. And that is when they will deliberate and vote on the proposed rules and regulations. Again, that, that hearing will be open to the public, but additional testimony will not be received at that time. Again, thank you very much and everyone have a good day.